Pauls? He's missing. Thompson? Missing. Gernat?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Jerem?
Here.
Milton?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here.
Franklin, who's just walked in the door?
Here. Should we wait 30 seconds for number seven here?
Yeah.
All right, please rise and for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to mention two things before we get started here today. One, of course, is that this week we're observing the 9/11 anniversary or commemoration throughout this country, which is tomorrow, and we have a number of events throughout our community that we appreciate and want to note as an important part of this country's history. And certainly, it's hard to believe that was 12 years ago, but it was, and we observe that solemn date. Secondly, I also want to note the sad passing of Sue Scott, who was an amazing community volunteer, community advocate, and philanthropist in Omaha, and helped us get so many great things accomplished in this community, so our hearts and thoughts and prayers are with the Scott family today. Thank you.
City Clerk, Saturday publication on the daily record on September 6th, notes for the council and regular city council meeting September 10th, 2013. Pauls has entered the chambers. A current copy of the opening exact is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers. Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Mayor's veto messages or a budget resolutions, item number five is mayor's veto message of resolution that recommended 2014 budget be revised by increasing appropriations of $250,000 in the general fund and decreasing appropriations in the contingency by $250,000.
Thank you. Mr. Gernat?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not surprised or shocked by the veto stamp on this particular piece of legislation regarding the 2014 budget. With all due respect, in the 12 years that I've been here, I have never seen a veto message that contained a name of a former city employee just to make a point. I find that a little bit difficult to swallow, but I think the message got across right after the first paragraph. I don't think the rest of it was needed on the veto message. It just sort of hit me the wrong way, and I want the record to reflect. And I would make a motion to override.
Second. Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The motion to override fails on a four to three vote.
Item number six is mayor's veto message of the resolution to budget the city of Omaha for the year 2014 is hereby approved. We need a motion to override as well.
And procedurally, Mr. Clerk, could you just explain that the...
Because we didn't override this one, we need to not override this one as well.
Okay.
And then we have a new adoption of the budget, item number seven.
Okay, motion to override.
Second. Motion to override?
Motion to override.
Yes.
Okay. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson?
No.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
No.
Milton?
No.
Mr. President?
No.
The motion to override fails on a two to five vote. Now, item number seven is resolution to budget the city of Omaha for the year 2014 as submitted by the council. It's hereby approved, yeah.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Resolutions rate tax rates, item number eight, resolution that pursuant to provisions of Nebraska vice statutes, the transit authority of the city of Omaha board certifies to the city council of the city on half of their total tax rate for the year 2014 to assist in the defray of all character of expenses of the authority. It's 5.224 cents.
Public hearing on item number eight is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number nine, resolution that pursuant to Nebraska vice statutes, the city council hereby certifies to the county clerk of Douglas County, Nebraska, the number of cents and fraction they're owed with which the city of Omaha desires to be levied on each $100 of actual valuation upon all taxable property within the limits of the city of Omaha for purposes following, including 49.92 cents for the city of Omaha's 2014 budget, including 28.44 cents for general fund purposes, 19.28 cents for principal and interest payments on the indebtedness of the city of Omaha, .600 cents for the satisfaction of judgment litigation expenses in connection there with, and 1.594 cents for the redevelopment fund.
Could you repeat that, Mr. Clerk?
Sure.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah, thank you for doing it.
Public hearing on item number nine is today. Are there any proponents?
That makes sense.
Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem?
Just because I received a few constituent inquiries lately, and I'd like to thank council staff Dean Miller for responding, there's often confusion amongst the public about their property tax dollars and how they're spent, and I want to thank the clerk for breaking this down, so if people are paying attention, they can see that of your total mill levy that you receive on your property tax levy, only 49.922 cents actually goes to the city, and almost 20 cents of that is going to pay the principal and interest on in the city's indebtedness. So for the difference between the 49 and the 19, you're getting your police, your fire, your streets, your sewer, and everything else that comes with the city services. So I just think it was...I wanted to emphasize that, given the questions that I've received and exactly how the tax dollars are being spent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion in a second.
Roll call.
Pauls? Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Ordinance on final rating and resolutions rate bonds, item number 10, ordinance authorizing directing a combined issue of general obligation bonds and general obligation refunding bonds to city Omaha in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $26,300,000 to return for identification purpose of various purpose, and refunding bond series 2013-A, and we have an amendment of the whole.
Thank you. Public hearing was held on August 27th.
Move the amendment.
Thank you. I have one question, too, for finance that I wanted to ask this morning. Can you tell us what the refinancing here, what's the interest rate we're achieving?
The interest rate on those are about 3%. We're refinancing about...my name's Al Herrick with the city finance department. We're refinancing about $11.4 million, and there's a total savings of doing that of about $1 million, or about $100,000 a year for the next 10 years.
And when you say 3%, a 3% interest rate for these is still historically low for the city, or at least any time in recent history?
That is correct.
Great. Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The amendment of the whole is passed seven to zero. Item number 11, resolution that the preliminary official statement pertains to issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bonds titled various purpose refunding bond series 2013-A is hereby approved.
Public hearing on item number 11 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Zoning ordinance on final rating and planning board attachments will take items 12 through 15. It's one case. 12 is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the neighborhood, conservation, and enhancement overlay district to incorporate in that district the properties located southwest of 10th and Pacific Streets. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 13 is ordinance to rezone properties located southwest of 10th and Pacific from HI to general, our central business district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 14 is resolution that the replat transmit here with entitled Blue Barn Hill is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 15 is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on items number 12 through 15 are today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 16, ordinance to rezone property located at 2626 and 2630 Y Street from heavy industrial district to R4 single-family residential district, high-density, A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 16 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents?
Second.
Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 17, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a planned unit development overlay district in a general office district located at 7815 Farnham Drive to approve the development plan. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 17 is today. Are there any proponents?
Can I? It'll turn on. Great, thank you. Okay. My name's Troy Meyerson, 409 South 17th Street with Fraser Stryker, and I'm here with Roger Lewis with Children's Hospital Foundation, Scott Kaminsky, who's in the back with Children's Hospital and Medical Center, and Cal Hines, who's the architect for the project as well. Children's Hospital is very excited about its proposed new home for the Carolyn Scott Rainbow House. For over 40 years, the current Carolyn Scott Rainbow House has provided housing for families whose children are undergoing acute, long-term treatment at Children's Hospital. And the new proposed facility will increase the number of families that can be assisted by this facility. I'd like to invite Roger Lewis up to the podium to give you a little background on some of the significant drivers that have instigated this project and why we're real excited about the new Carolyn Scott proposed Rainbow House.
Thank you, Mr. Meyerson.
Thank you, Troy. I'm Roger Lewis, executive director of the Children's Hospital and Medical Center Foundation. It's at 8401 West Dodge Road. I'm really happy to be here to talk to you about the Carolyn Scott Rainbow House. This has been a very important service of the hospital since the original Rainbow House opened in 1983. The Rainbow House is our hospitality house. It is a place for families of children who are being treated at the hospital to stay when their children are from outside of Omaha. So these regional families are coming to Omaha, they need a place to stay, and the Rainbow House provides that for them. We have seen a major increase in the number of patients treated at Children's in the last several years. In the last decade, our inpatient population has increased by 30% a year over that time period. Important part of that is that 70% of that increase has come from the regional market. Today, 50% of our patients come from outside of Omaha, so we have truly become a regional medical center. Last year, more than 2,000 families stayed at the Rainbow House from communities across Nebraska and 24 other states. As we look to the future, we see that the increasing demand is going to outpace the supply of rooms that we have at the Rainbow House, which is a serious issue for us. One of the things that's causing that, other than the fact of our natural growth as a regional medical center, is the fact that as we're looking to the future with national health care, we're looking at the fact that it's going to be harder and harder to keep children in the hospital. Today, we have children who come, and an example are cancer patients who come to the hospital and are treated with chemotherapy maybe three or four times a week per a period of time. Right now, we can typically keep them in the hospital. We're not sure that's going to be the case as national health care proceeds and new rules and regulations come forth from that. And so that's going to put increased strain on the Rainbow House, because these patients then will be able to stay at the Rainbow House, which is a positive, but we're going to need more room. Because if they live in Lexington, they can't go home back and forth two or three times a week. We look upon the Rainbow House as a mission service of the hospital. We understand fully that the medical costs of having a child in the hospital strains the financial capabilities of young families, and we do not want to add to that strain by having them worrying about where they're going to stay and how much it's going to cost them. The hospital charges a goodwill donation, it's not a charge, it's a goodwill donation, of $10 a night for these families. If the families cannot afford to stay, to pay that amount, they stay for free. So we...and then the hospital and the foundation picks up the cost of the Rainbow House. We cover the majority of the costs. But we feel that this is extremely important for, to provide the proper environment for the families who come to Omaha, to have their children cared for. So we hope that you will agree that this is an important project to go forward and increase the number of rooms we have available from 31 to 56, which is an important increase for us, and your vote in favor of that will be a vote in favor of a very important project for children's, and even more important, for a very important project for the families that we serve. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger, and we're here for any other questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. To my colleagues, you've already heard the rationale for doing this, passing this in regards to the service that they're going to provide to the city, but I'd also like to say that they've done their due diligence working with the neighborhood. They've reached out to the neighborhood, they've done all the crossing of the Ts and dotting of the Is, and not only have they done it this time, but Children's Hospital and the Children's Hospital Foundation have been doing it for about the last 12, 15 years. And so this is a great example of a developer, an entity that has a partnership with the neighborhood, and I vouch that the relationship is good, and in fact, it keeps getting better. So thank you for reaching out to the neighborhoods, and I'd like to make the move, motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Now, we'll take items 18 through 20 as one case. 18 is ordinance to rescind the planned unit development overlay district for the property located at 1101 South 178th Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 19 is ordinance to rezone property at 1101 South 178th Street from R6 Low Density Multi Family Residential District to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density. 20 is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate in that district the property located at 1101 South 178th Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearings on items number 18, 19, and 20 are today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Thompson?
Just a quick question from city planning. Is it Mr. Thiel?
James Thiel, city planning.
James, is this the development for the church?
Yes. Yes, Congressman, it's the development for church.
Okay. And once again, I'd like to say to my colleagues that the proper relationship with this developer and the community has also been good. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item 21 is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate that into that district the property located at 1101 South 178th Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. This is lot two, the others were lot one, in case you want to know.
Public hearing is today on number 21. Any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Resolutionary preliminary plats, plats subdivision agreements, item 22 and 3 go together. 22 is resolution that the pre-plat transmit entitled loss on 24th Street located at 3101 South 24th Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 23 is a resolutions subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings are continued today on items number 22 and 23. Any proponents?
Darren Smith, Architec on Development, Woodburn, Iowa 51579, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Gernat?
Come back up. Just restate the name for you.
Darren Smith, Architec on Development.
I know that we've had some speed bumps along the way.
Sure.
And we're at a point now that we can move forward. I know that we had some meetings with the planning department, and there were some concerns, a certain leg of the project sort of crumbled, and we've got a solid one back in place.
Sure.
Since we have this back on the agenda.
Yes, this project relies on low-income housing tax credits to proceed. So we've moved the project into NIFAS Crane Program. So in essence, as long as we go through the process with them, it will receive tax credits, it's just a matter of when. So we're moving forward with every other piece that we can from a planning standpoint, including this part. So really, everything is ready to proceed, other than all of the funding being in place.
Thanks for sticking with it. Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 24, resolution that the preliminary plat entitled Waterford Villages located northwest of 144th and Idaho Streets, along with attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 24 is today. Mr. Thiel, proponents?
Jason Thiel, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, here on behalf of the developer. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 25, resolution that the revised preliminary plat entitled Coventry located northwest of 204th and Harrison Street along attached conditions hereby accepted, preparation of final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 25 is today. Proponents? Mr. Huck?
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Bob Huck. I'm 1200 Omaha Tower here in Omaha. The...I'll put this on the screen here. This is a revised preliminary plat on basically the south half of Coventry, a large subdivision which stretches from Q to Harrison Street on the west side of 204th Street, the main purpose of which is to incorporate more single-family home sites, which has gone very well in the north part of this subdivision, and it's hoped that it obviously will go well here. 141 single-family lots, one multifamily, one mixed-use, and three lots, three areas for future development space. We'll be coming along with final plats in phases as we move forward. We're going to, assuming this is going to be approved today, we'll come before you, hopefully in the next month or two, to final plant the first phase so we can get going out here. Finally, the recession is going to fade, hopefully into the distant past, and we'll move forward. Thank you. Any questions? I'm glad to ask and answer.
Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 26 through 29 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 30 shall be laid over for two weeks. I said three weeks, not two weeks. Yeah. Liquor, item number 31. We'll take 31 and 32 together. They're both the same applicant at two locations. 31 is Hampton Inn and Suites Omaha Downtown, 1212 Cummings Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. And 32 is the Homewood Suites Omaha Downtown, 1314 Cummings Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on items number 31 and 32 are today. Are there any proponents?
I'm a proponent. I'm Linda Saren from.
Okay, come on down, please. Do it from there. Just write your name and your address there for the record.
Hi, I'm Linda Saren from 1212 Cummings Street, here to answer any questions you may have on behalf of item 31 or 32 for Hampton and Homewood Downtown Omaha.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
They're both adopted seven to zero. Item number 33 is 902 Tavern and Grill, 902 Dodge Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 33 is today. Proponents?
Mark Miller, proponent.
Okay, and your address too, please.
902 Dodge Street.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 34, Ragazzini's Pizza, 15475 Ruggles Street, Class I liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on item number 34 is today. Proponents?
Yes. Hi, my name is Jeff Daly. I am the owner of Ragazzi's, here to answer any questions.
And your address too?
Pardon me?
Your address too, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, 12710 Augusta Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 35, Tobacco and Liquor Outlet, 2939 North 108th Street, package liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing is today on item number 35. Proponents, please?
Thank you, folks. My name is Ali Chadri, 2938 108th Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 36, Benson Brewery at 6859 Maple Street, request permission for an addition to their present Class C liquor license, location of a walk-in cooler to the south, and A is the same cooler for their Class L brew pub and catering liquor licenses.
Public hearing on item number 36 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 37, Crescent Moon Ale House, 3578 Farnham Street, request permission for a special designated license for a beer garden on September 27th through the 28th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. with music ending at midnight.
Public hearing on item number 37 is today. Proponents?
Bill Baburic, 3578 Farnham Street, Omaha.
Candace Gladwin, 3578 Farnham Street, Omaha.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. Baburic.
Yes.
I just had, we usually get good reviews from the constituents on your events. They run and you run a good business there. And I had a couple, I wouldn't say complaints as much as concerns regarding 36th Street and its closure. And I just wanted to clarify for the record and for them, in case they're tuned in here today or follow up afterwards, that you do, in fact, make the application with the city to get permission to close 36th Street before you do that, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, with Mike gone, with this, Public Works.
I just wanted to thank you for clarifying that because there were some people who had wondered whether you were just going out there willy-nilly on your own and closing off the street. And you went through the legal channels to do that. And then, Public Works, Bob Stube, you processed those applications and have Fire Department and Public Safety check off on them, too.
Bob Stube, Public Works, that's correct. As he indicated, we have an individual in Public Works that handles that, and he goes through all the necessary requirements to make sure that it can be done.
Okay. Well, I want to wish you success again on this event, and I always hear good things about him, but this was just one little hiccup, I heard.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem.
Hopefully this addresses that.
Yep, we try to follow the rules. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
I would just add, too, that we, a couple of us just had lunch in Benson and took a peek in your window there in Fusion, and it looked like it's coming along well. So, we look forward to that being open to.
Guys are invited up October 1st.
October 1st is the day? All right, great.
Providing we, Friday we get our CO.
He's sitting back.
If our CO will be in good shape. Yeah, I think we're on target.
All right, thank you. Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 38, resolution that Big Red Kino is granted approval to operate a satellite at the Marquee Lounge at 14805 West Maple Road.
Public hearing on item number 38 is today. Proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Kino. We're located at 11248 John Paul Boulevard. I have with me today Cory Heiss. He's the owner. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Ms. Coffey. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Next, we'll take items 39 and 40 together. 39 is protest filed by three residents opposing the automatic renewal of the Class C liquor license of Spalding Bar at 3825 North 30th Street for the 2013-14 licensing year. And there's a legal opinion from Deputy City Attorney Thomas Mumgarth. 40 is resolution that the Spalding Bar at 3825 North 30th Street is requested to submit a formal application before its Class C liquor license is renewed for the 2013-14 licensing year.
Public hearings on items number 39 and 40 are today. Proponents, please? Seeing, are there proponents in favor? Okay, come on down, please.
They're actually opponents. Are there Protestants who didn't want their license renewed here? Not here.
Okay. Seeing no proponents, opponents, please, yes, thanks.
Sorry for the confusion. My name is Jim McVeigh, Mr. President, members of the council. We are here, I'm the attorney representing the corporation who owns Spalding Bar, appearing in front of the council today in case you had any questions regarding the status of this protest.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents today who want to speak? Okay. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, when I was asked earlier about whether I was in favor of a long form or not, I wanted to see what some of the residents who filed a protest had to say, but since they're not here today, just for my colleagues, I travel 30th Street and Ames and several of those areas quite often, especially around 2:00 in the morning. First of all, this place has been closed for the majority of this year, I would imagine. And so, there's not been the kind of activity that was talked about. And when they were open, I was not seeing the kinds of things that the residents were talking about. I just, but I wanted to hear from them because they may have seen something that I didn't see. But I traveled this area a lot because we had concerns about crowds gathering on 30th and Pratt and 30th and Ames and 42nd and Ames. And I traveled those specifically because I want to make sure that those crowds don't stick around. And to the best of my knowledge, I've seen when they were in operation, they were clearing the lot fairly quickly. I didn't see much activity going on. My only suggestion to the owners here is that you join the neighborhood association so that there is an awareness between you and the neighbors of what's going on and so that misunderstandings don't occur in the future. If there are any, you would be able to address them by joining the neighborhood association. So, I would, not mandating that you do it, but I would encourage you to do that. And just wanted to get a response from you on that, if I could, please. You're the owner, right? Or you're the manager?
Yeah, I'm one of the managers.
Your name, please.
Mark Macklin. Yeah, we've always tried to work with the community over there in that area. This, once we received, you know, we found out about the letter, we were kind of surprised because over the years, over the last couple of decades, since it's, you know, been in operation, we've always tried to address any concerns directly with the community. You know, always wanted to be, you know, help with, as a solution rather than a problem. I took a look at the crimapping.com, and it gives you six months snapshots of crimes in the area. And I looked at 2800 block to 30th Street on Spalding. Since we've been closed, there's been two assaults with weapons. There's been vandalism, burglaries, and robberies. And this is why the bar has been closed. So, I don't think that the resident or residents were fair in their assessment because, you know, it's, the bar, I don't believe is the issue. There is just a general problems within that neighborhood, you know, that need to be addressed. And we're doing the best we can to do it. We put in security cameras. We hired armed security. And like Mr. Gray said, we, closing time, we clear out the lot as soon as possible to get everybody on their way safely, so.
I would say, just for my colleagues again, thank you, I'm, thank you, appreciate it. And just for my colleagues, a couple of things, a couple of other things I would add. First of all, I would agree with him that I, you know, when I'm, when I'm, the times that I've been there, mostly it's on the weekends because I want to see how it functions. So, I've been to several of the clubs along that area just to sit outside and watch. And that lot is normally clear within 15 minutes. So, I know they're doing, I know they're at least taking care of business on the inside and outside as best they can. They had an unfortunate incident that occurred while they were opening about a year or so ago. The thing about that, though, those were two individuals that were just going to get at each other no matter where it was. It was unfortunate that it was at this club. But, and the other, and the final thing I say, I do know the owner, and I won't disclose him here, but he has done considerable kinds of things for the North Omaha community. We had a football team and a couple of baseball teams that he outfitted the entire teams. And so, I know the character of the owner, and I know from what I've seen that they're continuing to take care of business, that lot is being cleared. And so, I would have no problem giving them a license today and not making them go through the long-form process. But I'll yield the floor for right now and come back with a motion if necessary. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Milton.
I just have a question for Mr. Brown. The three people, it looks like there was at least three residents or more that filed a complaint. What do you do to notify them of when it's going to be called up for hearing? Do you actually send the specific residents that filed this a notice?
Buster Brown, City Clerk, yes, we do.
Okay, that.
They were notified that there was a hearing today, and we were under the understanding that they were going to be here.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have.
What's the procedure now? Do I make motion approve or a motion to deny the?
Well, you can, you can, you can have a motion. Is that?
Yes.
I think she's probably all of that.
Yeah, we did, we did go ahead. You're okay, you're okay. We closed public hearing, but Mr. Gray will call you up for your comments.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I was the one that petitioned for it.
Your name.
Okay.
My name is Regina Wright. I'm on the petition. I was the one that petitioned for it. I did not like what was going on there. This is the first quiet summer we've had all year, for a few years, as a matter of fact. My kids just started school last year, and I couldn't even walk them to school because when I was going across the bridge, broken bottles, condoms, needles. I had to start driving my kids three blocks to school, which is ridiculous. First summer we've had, no helicopters. First summer we've had, nobody running through my yard. My kids waking up screaming because there's bullets. First summer we've had where we've had peace and quiet, and I'm just really fed up with what's going on with that bar. It really needs to be shut down, really needs to be shut down. And the other person that was supposed to be here, I guess he couldn't make it, but I was running late off of work, and I apologize. But that's what, that's what I'm here to say. I don't like that bar at all. They've had too many killings, too much has happened up there, and it needs to be shut down. Anything else?
No, I'll probably call you now. Could you come back up again, please? What I suggested to them, I traveled that area quite a bit, is what I was telling them. And I'm especially traveling that area early in the morning, like 1:30, 2:00 in the morning, to make sure that at least the lots are being cleared and the area around their building is being picked up. And I've noticed that that's been occurring. But you're saying that they're moving off of the lot and coming somewhere else and like through yards and that sort of thing? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, they are. They will run through our yard. They will fight in our backyard. We've had fights in our backyard. I have a garden in the backyard, and before the bar got shut down from whatever it was that happened to it, my garden was regularly trampled. Me and my kids, we were trying to keep a vegetable garden going, and it just didn't work out.
If, the suggestion that I made to the, to the, one of the managers was that they joined the neighborhood association up there so that they're aware of the problems that you're talking about, would that, would that condition them joining the neighborhood association so that they're aware of what's going on in that neighborhood and being involved in that neighborhood? Would that help with your concerns, do you think?
I've lived in that neighborhood since 1992. The problems got worse, and it started about 98, I want to say, and has not gotten better. I cannot see how they could not see what was going on because their license is such that they're permitted to sell the containers, you know, to the people, and then they come out and they break up. I can't see how they cannot see what's going on with that. I don't, I don't understand how they cannot see that the violence that's being caused in that area from their bar is, I can't see how they haven't addressed it and tried to change it.
They, excuse me, they have an off sale?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
They can sell it. They can sell it in the, in the original container, they can sell it. I'm sorry, I did my research, too, before. But yes, they can do that, and that's not, and then even if they couldn't sell it, you know, still the point is, is that the violence is so bad there, if they were going to do something about it, you know, they've had since 98, and what's this, 2013, to address it, and they haven't. They just haven't.
Okay. The, have you filed any police reports? Because I'm not getting anything from the police department that they're.
I've called the police when they were, when they were being disruptive, and the police have come out and checked it. They said, "Do you want us to come see you?" I'm like, "Yes." And they haven't. Please come see me, you know, and they haven't. So, I don't know what's up with that.
Okay.
And I personally did not know I could file a police report until you just said so, so.
Well, you can call the police if they're, if they're fighting in your yard, or if there's debris that ends up in your yard or in the house, and you think it's coming from that club, you should be calling the police.
It is. I've found like bottles of alcohol in my yard. I don't drink, and I don't smoke. And my kids don't see, have never, they didn't know what a cigarette was until they were out in public, and they asked me, "What's that smoke coming out of that man's mouth?" And they're about, they're six years old, so for them to walk through my yard and see cigarette butts and glass and beer cans and, it's, I don't like it. It's not acceptable to me as a homeowner. It's not acceptable.
Okay. Can I get you to come back up again, please? One or both of you, perhaps?
Yeah. Yes, your honor, yes, Jim McVeigh. If I can ask, respond to one question or one comment, although the Class C does allow off sale, this bar doesn't have off sale. They don't engage in that practice. So, if there are beer cans being found in other people's yards or whatever, they're not coming from this bar since they don't do an off-sale practice here at the Spalding Bar.
I've been around there and been in there a couple of times. I didn't even know that you could sell, that you had a Class C. I thought it was.
That's, that's one of the things that had, you know, we can't allow anybody to walk out of there with anything, so we don't use that portion of it. And if you been past the bar, you can see how far we are from the nearest home. I don't think anybody's leaving the bar and going through anybody's garden or anything, but I, you know, you know, I just don't understand where those allegations are coming from. I don't see how it's plausible or possible that that could be happening from patrons at that bar just because of the sheer distance we are away from any residential home, where at least I would judge about 300 feet from the nearest home. And across the street is just a business.
But you don't sell, you don't take, you don't allow people to take packaged liquor?
You can take, you can take no liquor outside of that bar. You can take no glass, no bottles, nothing. And that's been the rule for a long, long time, so.
We, I want to be, I want to be, I want you to be a good neighbor here. I'm trying to figure out how we do this and, you know, because I don't, I don't know that we close down and try to attempt to close down an establishment if we can reach some sort of a compromise, if you, you know, which is what I'm trying to get to. Yeah, I think so. Mr. Mumgarth? First of all, I guess, can we amend this to a, to make sure that there are no sales of alcohol going, you know, that there's not even the possibility of alcohol sales, or alcohol being sold and taken off the premises?
Tom Mumgarth, Deputy City Attorney. No, you can't do that with this resolution. You would have to get there indirectly by adopting this resolution, requiring them to submit an application. And then, when they would come back on the application, yes, you could request that be a condition imposed on their future license. But you'd have to go through the second step to get there.
But you'd have to go through this step to get to that point?
Yes, you would have to first pass this, adopt this resolution, requesting that an application be filed, and then, when they come back on the application hearing, you could discuss conditions imposed on that license.
Okay. Let me, does any, if there are anybody else on the floor that has any questions? Otherwise, because I got to think about this for a minute. Go ahead.
I have had a chance to talk with Mr. Mumgarth about this.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim McVeigh, 6910 Pacific Street, appearing on behalf of DNW. I've had a chance to talk with Mr. Mumgarth. What we understand, our obligation is, maybe not legally, but if nothing else, as a good neighbor, is to meet with the neighbors, try to work with the neighbors if there are specific concerns. You were reluctant to mention the other individual involved in this, in this, that's Mr. Goodwin. He is present today. I did ask him how long he's been a fixture in the North Omaha community. He wouldn't give me the year because he didn't want that of record. But, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, the fact is, we're interested in, and the bar owners are interested in being good neighbors. If there is something that's an issue, the first notice that the bar owners had regarding this problem was the letter from the city. We had not been contacted by the people that signed the petition, but we're willing to reach out to them and visit with them. If there's some specific concerns they have, maybe assurances that we're not selling or that the bar's not selling off sale, anything along those lines is something that I think needs to be done, regardless of what resolution or what this council does today regarding this motion. And so, that'll happen regardless. Whether that's, we're able to address and figure out all the issues guarding gardens and so forth, I don't know the answer to that, but I think that's, that's at a minimum what needs to be done. And that'll happen regardless of whether this motion is contingent upon that taking place. taking place.
I guess I'm wondering if, if, if you all can, if, if they can meet with you, if we lay this over a week and let them meet with you, hear your concerns, address it from that perspective. And if you get satisfaction, fine. If not, we can always come back and, and, and make this long form application. I'm thinking that we lay it over a week and give, give you all a chance to talk. That's a motion.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Milton?
I think that that's a, a good resolution is to lay it over because I, I think, and tell me your name again. Regina. I think Regina has some very valid concerns.
I do too.
And I almost think we're contradicting ourselves right now. There's a lot of, we talk about the violence that's occurring in North Omaha, the problems in North Omaha, and we, we're telling the people who live in North Omaha, "You need to come together, you need to stand up and you need to work to help curb this." And so now we have a group of citizens that's saying, "I think that there are problems here. Once this bar closed down, we didn't have the problems." And I'm afraid if we just kind of discard their concerns and say, "Well, we don't think it has anything to do with this bar," it's going to discourage the people in her neighborhood from trying to get involved and make their neighborhood a better place. So I, I, I don't like to, you know, I'm not looking to close down a business or anything. But sir, what you just, I, I think said in response to Regina was, "That's not coming from my bar. There's no possible way that her garden's getting destroyed or any of that's coming from my bar." What I would ask that you do in the next week, if you could sit down with her, is maybe think about maybe some of the people from your bar maybe doing that. It's not necessarily your fault and you're not to blame, but if you could maybe accept that there are people that maybe are at your bar that are causing some of these problems, it may help in resolving the issues, just to, to recognize it. I, I would just ask that you'd be, that you'd be open, open to that.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, just for clarification, Councilman Gray, is this the bar that's just north of Stage Two?
Yes. Well, no, it's not just, it's, there's two of them that's north of Stage Two. One is on the same side of the street. That's the Seville.
Okay.
That's the Seville. We're not talking about that one. That one's, that one's sustained damage too in a car accident, so that one's closed. But I'm talking about Spalding. That's on the, it would be on the east side of the street.
East side?
Yeah, it would be on the east side of the street.
Okay. I know the one now.
Okay. And, and let me just say, Councilmember Milton, I think you're right. I, I, I don't disagree at all, but the, the concern that I have is that we've got about five or six. I think we've done a fairly good job with the, with the drinking establishments on 30th Street. We've got some real serious issues with some homes that, where gang members are being allowed to congregate. And I think a lot of that is coming from some of those homes as opposed to some of the clubs, but I think the clubs still have a responsibility as well. And laying it over a week so that they can get together and talk, I think, might be the best answer. And at the end of it, if you're still not satisfied, we can go through with the long form piece. But I, I think for the time being, if we, if we do that, we might be able to seek some reasonable resolution, because I do have some concerns about three or four houses in that area too, where they, where they seem to allow gang members to, to congregate and so forth. So I, I have the motions out there in just a second. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, do you have a follow up?
Just one more question, Councilman Gray. So in your estimate, because I know in the past you've worried, you've worried about density.
Yes.
And in your estimation, those three bars that close don't constitute too much density?
You know, Councilmember, we had issues with, with, with one, specifically the, the Seville, and I think we did make them go through a long form process, but at the end of it, they stopped having some of the activity that they were having up there and just made it a motorcycle club, more or less.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't see the density as an issue. I haven't heard a lot of complaints. That's why I wanted to hear from the, the folks who complained today. But I haven't heard a lot of complaints there. And again, like I say, I travel that area. As a warning to other bar owners, I've traveled this area quite a bit, especially at 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock in the morning to make sure that they're, that they're cleaning up around the lot, that people are leaving those lots quickly. So I don't really see it, I don't, I don't see density as an issue in that area at that, at this point.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, I'm also glad that there's the motion to lay over, and I assume the motion contemplated because my seconded the continuance of the public hearing on both of these, 39 and 40.
Yes.
Okay. I'm glad that you have hired a lawyer, especially Mr. McVeigh, who I have personal experience with, and my, the other hat I wear is a lawyer, is a fine lawyer, and, and he's a very reputable person within the bar. And so I'm, I've got comfort that you will reach out in a sincere way to Regina and, and her neighbors to address why, in their view, this Spalding Bar has contributed to the problems that they've faced and, and try to address their concerns in a positive way. I'd also think it's appropriate that you reach out to the Liquor Commission under the hardship rules of the statutes of the Liquor Control Act, which is something you probably were not aware you were required to do, but to explain why greater than 30 days you have not been operating and haven't notified them of that fact. But when we come back next week, if for whatever reason, despite what able counsel you have, not been able to address their concerns, and the concerns, in my view at least, are reasonable, I won't have any hesitation to vote for the long form or conditions or amendments to the type of license you have or restrictions. So I want to make sure that, you know, from my perspective, that I thought Regina came over very credibly today, in a sincere way, not in a spiteful or vindictive way, just as a concerned neighbor and mother and homeowner. And if it's even only 300 feet away, that may seem like a distance to you, but, you know, the, the issues that can arise with liquor licenses we've seen in other places, that's certainly within the realm of, of close by. So I hope you're open to suggestions and listening to her. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Our Mr. Gernat?
Thanks, Mr. President. I agree with my colleagues and will support a, a layover. One of the things I think that Regina said that caught my attention is the, in addition to the, she eloquently put about in regards to activating maybe a couple of extra departments within government, our litter department with the trash concern that the neighbors have, and also with the condoms and the needles, that's a public health issue. And the Health Department can be notified on something like this. And I'm, and I'm sure the liquor license owners fully aware of that. And they, they should be discussing these things within this next week and bring back some assurances to the council so we can move forward in a positive manner and everybody's, has a good common ground. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on a one week layover. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Layover, one week and continue the public hearing.
Consent agenda. Item number 41 through 46 are all passed 7 to 0.
Public hearings on agenda items number 41 through 46 were held on August 27.
Roll call. Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Items 41 through 46 are all passed 7 to 0.
The public hearings on agenda items number 47 through 71 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Motion for a call.
Second, I had one question for Public Works on number 51 in this grouping. And we talked about this a little bit this morning, but I just wanted to get confirmation of the timeline. This is a, one of the city's first safe, safe routes to school grant projects near Westbrook Elementary, and it's something the city has brought back and resuscitated in the last year. It's important to the traffic patterns there and certainly safe crossings for kids, have concerns particularly at 78th and, and Western right there. So I know we have a project underway, and this is the design for that project, but I just wanted to get the update on a firm timeline when that will be constructed, assuming this is approved today.
Bob Stube, Public Works. This is a safe routes to school project, infrastructure project, and, and because it is 100% federally funded, there's a process that we have to comply with in order to be able to expend those funds. Typically, the safe routes process takes about three years to go from project initiation to bid letting. Under this particular contract that we have for the consultant services, the consultant is required to complete their design and preparation of all the documents for submittal by August of 2014. With that, we would anticipate then that the bid letting would take place right after that, and that potentially the, the goal would be to have construction done in the summer of 2015 prior to school opening that year.
Okay, thank you. And we're confident that timeline can be met?
We will, we will strive to meet that timeline. Keep in mind that there, this is a process because it is federally funded, and so there are requirements to get approval from the Nebraska Department of Roads for those submittals that will be required.
Thank you. I know it's been a, it is a cumbersome process to go through, but I know we're committed to it and we'll get it done. And in the meantime, we're working with the police department and everybody else to make sure we have some enforcement there to maintain its safety until then. That's all I had. I see Mr. Jerem has his light on.
Yes, if Jay could make his way down here. While he's doing so, I wanted to talk first about item number 71 and, and recognize that former council member and mayor, Subby Anzaldo, who just celebrated his 80th birthday, who has provided many, many years of public service as being renominated for the zoning board of appeals, and just how excited he is and honored and thankful to the mayor for his, her nomination. So I just want to point that out. And number 70, there was apparently some questions raised. I've asked Mr. Davis to come down to, with regard to addressing steam fitter, pipe fitter, examiners, board nomination. In the question surrounding, was this applicant licensed and have the sufficient service years to meet the eligibility requirements to make sure that those concerns were addressed as well as whether he had sufficient knowledge of the codes, by virtue of those, to follow the rules and requirements of what the code has? And Mr. Davis was tasked with finding that out and just wanted you to report back, so.
Jay Davis, Assistant Planning Director. We had received some word, there may be some opposition to Mr. Stewart's, Stewart's appointment. I had asked Mr. Edwards from the mayor's office to go to the law department to confirm that he was in fact a qualified candidate. The law department did come back and confirm that, and because of that, we have no objection to the planning department for that.
And he's signed the, the oath to follow the rules and, and the regulations?
Yes, the oath has been signed. All the documentation is in place and in order for that appointment, so at this point we're satisfied that they've met the requirements.
All right, thank you.
Your bet.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to congratulate Mr. Anzaldo. This is the mayor's appointment, but I, I had a big hand in also making sure this nomination goes through. And one other thing that, that I want to say about Subby is that he's very, very neighborhood-friendly. He's got a, a reputation of really listening, and so I was overjoyed to, to also throw my head in the, the ring to, to promote this. Good man.
Thank you. Mr. Gernat?
I will third that. Mr. Anzaldo has been extremely active in providing affordable housing in, in District Four. I think he's up to his 42nd or 43rd unit already, just in District Four. And so I applaud the mayor for continuing this appointment and belated happy birthday.
Yeah, I think he's on 43rd. I think District 44.
Thank you. I think we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Items 47 through 71 are adopted 7 to 0. We'll bring up item 89, which is another resolution, which added on the supplement. Resolution that the nomination appointment by the mayor, Chad Richter, as a member of the Omaha Personnel Board is hereby confirmed.
Public hearing on item number 89 is today. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion for a call.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted 7 to 0. Now, appeal rate bid rejections, item number 72, Volvo Trucks of Omaha appeals the rejection of their bid of July 24, 2013 for truck, cabin chassis 60,000 GBW project.
Public hearing on item number 72 is today. Are there proponents?
Ryan Askew, 16511 Home Street for Volvo Trucks of Omaha. Actually, my letter was, wasn't so much to appeal this bid because I know the process to go through the spec writing. It was simply to bring light to the option of something other than Allison. In the days of old, when there was only one option, it was considered a monopoly. I agree with specs and that in the past, an automated transmission, automated manual by definition wasn't anything like an automatic. The reason that municipalities and trucking companies across the country spec automatics is it allows you to diversify your driving base. Automated transmissions that utilize a clutch, which is what Volvo offers, as well as Eaton and Daimler Chrysler, the technology, when it started up until about seven or eight years ago, was difficult. It was hard to function. Volvo's product has been in use for over 15 years in Europe. It's now assembled in the United States. It's utilized in dump trucks, in school buses, in half million dollar rock band tour buses. It skip shifts. It has all the technology available. My only contention with the bid wasn't the spec, and I understand I bid a, a truck that met spec. I just threw this out there as an alternative to show what something that does the same job can cost and/or save the city. I'm not looking to argue the bid. I'm just saying, can we, as we go forward, look at this as a viable alternative? The truck transmission in these applications is not used to power the plow or any of the equipment. It is simply used to propel the vehicle forward and backward. In an Allison transmission, you put it in drive and go. In an iShift, you put it in drive and go. You pull the, push the yellow knob to detach the brakes and that you, you move the vehicle. I would venture that most operators would not know that it was an Allison versus an iShift. What I simply want to do is as we go forward, have this as an, as a viable alternative. Omaha Public Power has taken one. Saunders County's now taken one. It's an alternative that's much lower in price. If you're Allison and you're the only automatic transmission in the world, you're going to set your price commensurate with how many competitors you have. If you have something else out in the market that is a viable alternative, and I will do what I can to prove to the city that it is a viable alternative, at that point, that's a good cost savings. I believe the iShift bid was $8,000 less. So in these times, I believe it's probably a good thing to look at a viable alternative that saves the city money. Not this bid. I'm not looking to argue this bid. I just wanted to bring this to light, that there are alternatives out there, and I'll do what is ever necessary to provide information to anyone that wants it.
Great, thank you. We've, we've.
Yes.
Great. We've now had that presentation, the benefit of that presentation. We appreciate it. And Mr. McCoy was sitting here the whole time too and also heard it, so thanks for bringing it to our attention. And the motion is to withdraw?
Allow withdrawal?
Yes.
Second.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's put through on 7 to 0. Item number 73 is ordinance vacating the east west alley between Dodge and Douglas from Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Items 73 is ordinance vacating the East-West Alley between Dodge and Douglas from 19th Street East. A is an amendment requested by the council president. B, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing was held on August 27.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to adopt the amendment in a second. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed as amended, seven to zero. Resolutions. Item number 74, resolution that the bid from Blademaster Grounds Maintenance to defer on labor materials for the Benson Public Parking Lot and Common Area is hereby approved.
Public hearings continue today on item number 74, and I'll add that we will place this item on file because we are going to rebid this project with the Benson Business Improvement District to more accurately reflect what they want to accomplish and what the city wants to accomplish. I think we need to have public hearing today. So proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearings closed.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
74 is placed on file, seven to zero. Ordinance on second reading, plan where attachment. Item number 75, ordinance vacating 85th Avenue from Cass Street North. A, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 75 is today. Mr. Jovan?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of Land O'Ha development. This street vacation will allow for a final plat rezoning and a subdivision agreement that will come before the council over the next few weeks or so, and it will allow for an 18,000-square-foot office building at this particular location. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
I'd just like the record to reflect that unlike recent days, Mr. Jovan, you don't have a crowd of people following you in.
It's kind of nice.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
He's carrying through that theme of orange on his tie.
Yeah.
I would add, too, before we, or I guess it's just public hearing, which is closed now, but I do want to recognize the Land O'Ha family for their contribution of all the trees in our community. We discussed that in the Parks Committee today, and we appreciate that, that donation and that work on our behalf. Thanks.
Next item.
Ordinance on second reading, item 76, ordinance clearing, seapropriating property located at 3002 North 41st Street and 4541 Saratoga Street for the implementation of the consolidated plan.
Public hearing on item number 76 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearings closed.
Item number 77, ordinance to amend almost full code sections 34, 154, 58, 165, and 5115 to amend requirements for lease application, bond, annual rental, permit fees for neighborhood or business district identification signs applied for by business improvement district boards.
Public hearing on item number 77 today, is today. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number 78, ordinance to create and establish a charter study convention in accordance with section 815 of the Home Rule Charter to provide for membership and its appointment thereto, to provide for the duties of such charter study convention, to provide that the timetable for which the charter study convention shall undertake for responsibilities and by which it is to complete its duties to provide for the election of officers and adoption of rules or procedures and require the use of city facilities and personnel to provide that no city funds shall be expended without proper approval by the city council.
Public hearing on item number 78 is today. Are there proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. I'll ask a question, and we'll see if there's any more lights. Maybe we have a mayor's office representative here today. If you're willing, Mr. Bylik or Ms. Segren?
No.
It's, it's not a difficult question, but we, we discussed it today in a pre-council. And because this hasn't been much of a public forum yet on, on what this is going to do, I thought it might be good to have a little bit of a discussion before it's approved, probably next week. So this is a big deal in terms of city operations. It's a city charter review and convention that we do every 10 years. And what this ordinance does is establish a committee of 25 that we discussed this morning to take up suggestions from the public and city departments and council members and, and others to consider changes to our city charter. And if those are recommended and if those are approved by the, by the city council, those go to a vote of the people probably next year. So just a short conversation about that or interaction with you. We talked about the reason for 25, which makes sense. And I know our law committee has talked about this and, and been in close communication with the mayor's office. And it's our understanding that of the 25, there's 14 members, and there'll be essentially council recommendations to the mayor who that, who she would then appoint, two from each council district based on a council member's suggestions, right?
Correct. Cassie Segren, mayor's office.
And then a nine additional appointments strictly by the mayor that she would, that we approve. Is that correct?
That would also be our understanding as being correct.
Okay. And then, as Mr. Pauls noted this morning, there's an additional two of the 25 that makes sense because of committee structures and how this typically runs smoothly that probably would be suggested by the law committee. Is that correct, Mr. Pauls, in your understanding?
Yes.
Great. And then, I don't know if it's Mr. Mumgarth or Ms. Segren, this is a question for you, but just what can the public expect in this process? I believe it outlines an eight-week process whereby the committee would make recommendations to the city council, and then we would consider action upon those. Is that right?
That's correct. I'll defer all other questions to Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, thank you.
That's typically been the process in the past.
Your name, please.
Tom Mumgarth, Deputy City Attorney. And I will turn to the city clerk, but can, he's been around a long time. He can add some also, that the charter convention holds meetings, at least one meeting with public input. They have committees that look at various areas of the charter. Those are all then brought back to the city council, and there's a public hearing on all of the recommendations, and the council gets to make a decision in public. So there is opportunity for a great deal of public input throughout the process.
And when this is approved next week, when does that process start?
I'll turn to the city clerk.
October 1st, or I believe it's October, right after October 1st, they will, we need to have our appointments in shortly, and proceed in October to be done by the middle of December.
Great.
Basically eight weeks to finish.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I have a lot of information if we have somebody who really wants to know all the past history. Have all, I, and this is, I have to thank Jim for collecting this, and he gives me a summary of some of the past issues that have been discussed. It also outlines 12, 15 hours is what this will require. And people, whoever we nominate, they have to fill out a little bit of resume about themselves. It's, it would be an interesting endeavor for somebody who's interested in city government, and it has like the, the types of committees. I'm just giving a little information. I'm dealing with governance structure. One deals with administration and mayor's office. One deals with finances and miscellaneous, and one deals with human resources and legislature. That, those are the possibilities. It has, he's locked into that. So there is some structure once these individuals get, get going. And like you say, it's, it will take a little bit of their time, but it's all good. And we do get to make the final decision on whatever happens. Thank you.
Great.
Pete, Buster Brown, City Clerk. It is October 7th, the first meeting, which will be a Monday.
Great.
And then eight weeks after that.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, this, you probably answered this already, Mr. Pauls, but further clarification. The public input, is it more than just a public forum, or can the public actually send things to a central location by way of email or writing? Or, Mr. Brown, you may want to.
Buster Brown, City Clerk. It would be fairly easy for them to do that. They could either send it to the mayor's officer to me, and we can make sure that it gets, gets to the committee.
Okay, so it's more than just showing up one night and getting on a microphone? They can have input along the way during the-
That's correct.
-during the eight weeks?
Yes.
Okay. Quite a few citizens are wanting to give input more this time compared to the last time we did it, so I told them that I would ask that question. Thank you.
I think that's a good point. I think we should make sure the committee provides that opportunity, too, when they assemble. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's also a good point Councilmember Jerem makes. Is it also different from 10 years ago is the avenues for social media and involvement in that respect, and that's something we think we should consider with the committee, too. All right. No further lights. Next item.
Pursuant City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items number 79 through 86 shall be held on third reading. Pursuant City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda item number 87 shall be held on second reading. And on the supplement, pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda item number 90 shall be held on the second reading.
Second.
Roll call. Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
72 is adopted seven to zero. We'll bring up item 89, which is another resolution, which is added on the supplement. Resolution that the bid from Blade Master Grounds Maintenance to defer on labor materials for the Benson Public Parking Lot and Common Area is hereby approved.
Public hearings continue today on item number 74, and I'll add that we will place this item on file because we are going to rebid this project with the Benson Business Improvement District to more accurately reflect what they want to accomplish and what the city wants to accomplish. I think we need to have public hearing today. So proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearings closed.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
72 is placed on file, seven to zero. Ordinance on second reading, plan where attachment. Item number 75, ordinance vacating 85th Avenue from Cass Street North. A, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 75 is today. Mr. Jovan?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of Land O'Ha Development. This street vacation will allow for a final plat rezoning and a subdivision agreement that will come before the council over the next